Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone can stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to thank everyone and welcome everyone to our meeting this evening.
We're not on yet.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. The first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
I make the motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
And it was seconded by Gettle. It was a tie, so I just had to make sure. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, and we've got one absent. Okay, 5.0 is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on an item related to this agenda in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. Agendas can be found on the table over there. And we don't have anybody sign up for community comments. So, we are gonna go to 6.0, which is student highlight.
We were working on seeing if we could get the choir to read us as they came in, but that did not pan out. Another student highlight was that our basketball team was on the local news, Duluth News, when they played Carlton County. Was that last? It was just this last week. It's kinda neat to see, you can see our kids on there.
Yes.
Let's say congratulations to Carlton, so a little TV publicity for Rupert County. So it's quite nice.
Great. And we've got basketball games happening tomorrow. We've got boys and girls basketball games happening tomorrow. And we also have a ski race out at Boothson tomorrow. So if you're not doing anything and wanna come and stand on the ski hill, that's where I will be.
And there's basketball tonight, right now.
And basketball tonight. Yes.
Girls.
Girls tonight. So a lot of stuff happening. Okay, 7.0 is the consent agenda. And is there anything from the consent agenda someone would like pull for further discussion? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay. 8.0 is discussion action items. 8.1 goals report.
So you have that in your packet. Diversity Committee, actually they met today. And so I will speak with Ms. Myers. We'll get an update as far as what's going on with our diversity committee. And then, our staff are now in place. We still have, we have one staff member who's out currently. We're just gonna wait and medically find out what the status would be for that individual. But otherwise, we have other spots. We have that posted for, it's in the special ed world, so we have a specific posting for special education cell that we put out. So we're working on that. Academic achievement, our PLCs are in place for our academics. So our QCOM goals are focused on math this year. The other is that they are starting that process now of looking at registration. It's kind of the very early stages now, so you know, math department, you can have a different math class, science department. So we're starting that. So in January, they'll really start gearing that up. The other would be is to include the options for possible telepresence courses throughout the year that are offered throughout the year. And then, if I can...
Will we be offering any classes?
At this point, I can't say yes or no. One of our teachers would like to put that out as an offering. But we can definitely be, you know, taking courses. As far as our students can. And then effectively manage the district resources. Obviously, you hear about our, where we're, our status with the bond. And then, we just went through the audit process. And shared with you last, but most likely February, March, that time zone. Ms. Baklin, myself will bring to the board a revised budget for this current year budget.
Any questions? Okay, 8.2 is a bond update.
Some bills have been paid as far as what's going on, safety and security, bus garage security. So we took some of the system that we actually had in the building and we moved it over to the bus garage. So we have that area now with cameras. And so, a couple of the other cameras were repaired, as you can see, based off of that. Kirk Goldberg, that was some components for our webpage. And then, we did get some Chromebooks, updated that. And in that also are some desktops that needed to be updated as far as throughout the district. Reroof, we're actually having a meeting tomorrow on that. Update as far as that. And just as you say, our last bill actually was back in October, so we haven't had anything billable currently on that. Bus garage, that one's the done. Completed vehicles, haven't, the last thing was that trailer purchase. And deferred maintenance. Nothing updated there as far as what's going on. And then FFNE, same. We did just put together another order to complete the list for the culinary arts that Mr. Gash provided for us. You know, now that he's in there and established, he kinda knows they need X, Y, and Z. And we just reviewed that today, Ms. Baklin, myself. And so, that is being submitted. And then, bills paid. Restaurant products, cabling, you know, some components as far as what's going on in our culinary arts.
Well, I see the numbers are dwindling quite a bit. And so, I'm hoping that we're near done paying for things. The roof fund still is quite large, but everything else is coming down rather quickly.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause the big projects are done. So once we are completed with this ACA roof, then we're gonna have some funds. And we have a list. And so we'll go over that as far as prioritizing, you know, what's gonna have the most impact for our kids.
The science labs, is Max Gray paid in full?
No. No. We have not finalized that because we still have a punch list and there's still some outstanding items. That's one of the others. One is part of our fan system. Where it's, it's noisy. Shouldn't be noisy. And so that's one of the big areas that we're working on. They're working on design. And then also the folks who are doing mechanical and actual venting are all working together to figure out why. Why is there all this sound? You know, so for instruction, they don't have to speak so loud. It should be like it is in here right now. And so that's one of the big pieces that we're working on currently.
Are they not supposed to be finished by tomorrow entirely? All of it's taken care of?
That was back in August.
Yeah, which, well...
From our last board meeting... You had a conversation with them after the last meeting.
Yes.
You were gonna have a little sit-down on the telephone. And... And?
That's the outstanding item. That's the only thing in the science, correct?
That will not be done.
Science is all corrected.
Everything, everything?
Everything except for Holman and Homie, which is the contractor we hired
Okay.
off the project. So we had that ventilation noise in that ductwork there. Myself along with the balancer, we were able to manipulate our whole system. And it quietened it down without any other work. They just had too much air running through their rear and slowing everything down, and it still gets. And then, right now with culinary arts, that issue came up after the fact. I mean, so we didn't originally know at the time that it was that loud. So, right now, they're working on it. We had their engineers up here. We didn't want them to do anything before the 14th. So when we had open house, people would come in and we'd have the ceiling wide open. So we asked them to wait on that till they had everything completed. We do our open house. They come in and it takes them a day.
Okay.
It takes day as in a subcontractor?
A subcontractor. So the mechanical contractor that put in, apparently they have... So the fan is sitting on the roof, right? Well, they put a vent grate below it with a damper. So you have all that air coming straight down on. And that's our noise. Instead of running it through the ductwork first before it hit the diffusers.
Did we hire the subcontractor?
That Max Gray did.
Max Gray did.
Yep. So, I mean, this is obviously no cost to the district. But which is another reason why we haven't paid our bills in full. Or have we talked about the $500 a day until the project is completed? So all of that is still in play. So until the project is completed, we don't...
Yeah, we have talked to ARN for a full number of days. We're charging.
Yep. Okay.
That message has been delivered to ARN.
Okay. But other than that loud, everything else is done, right? That loudness, okay. All right. Yes, 'cause tomorrow the open house is from 4 to 6.
Correct.
In addition to basketball games. And there's also an auction in the cafeteria, correct?
Yes.
Silent, you write in bids for various things. So...
Refrigerators, stoves, some furniture, miscellaneous kitchen items. Chairs.
Okay.
So the outstanding payments to Max Gray, are those, are we gonna be moving money from like FFNE or something? 'Cause the available funds is just $6,000.
Yes. We'll have to adjust.
Okay.
I have a question. I've had it for a while, just thought... We have a glass wall for, in the culinary arts, right?
Yes.
Well, I happened to hear on the national news about some school district that was really concerned because they had all these glass walls and they're not bulletproof. And what are they, I mean, that's what the discussion was about. And I thought, and they were talking about taking them out or whatever you do, I don't know. But, okay. Are ours bulletproof, which seems...
No, that's an internal wall, which is a little different. You know, most of the glass walls...
Unless you have an intruder.
Within the building. Majority of the time that you've heard about intruders, it's they shoot through to get in. Into the building.
Right.
So what we can look at is, there's a film, 3M makes it, that makes it bulletproof. That you shoot them and they just, they shatter, but they stay solid.
Oh. I mean, I had not thought about that before. I thought about, is this not gonna be a distraction? If I'm sitting here and watching, you know, kids go by in the hall or in the hall, everyone's gonna be peeking in. You know? It's just consideration. So, okay, you answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on bond information? Okay. All right, 8.3 is to approve the expenditure revenue report November 2018. Laurie, did you have any?
Um, I know the first column now that our audit's done, the first column is not gonna change now, the actual, last year's actuals. Those have been a lot hidden now. And so, I think I had an asterisk on that at one point, saying that that could go, that could change. No, I think it's going well. Haven't really done a whole lot of comparison. I know the budget piece has got some changes that might have to take place once we comprehend all the staffing changes we've had this year.
Thank you. Does I need a motion approval?
I'll move to approve the report.
I have a second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, 8.4 to approve 2017-18 audit.
We had our audit presentation at the last board meeting. We just had not gone through the actual approval of that. Is that in our packet or was it... It was in the packet last, yeah. The last time.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Were we supposed to approve it last meeting and we just didn't?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
That would be a yes.
Okay. So we got all the information. We were able to take home the large financial packet. A few of us took it. So, any other...
Yeah, we thought it was, that the board just had to accept it. We did a little bit more research and we actually had to approve it.
Okay. So, any, anybody have any comments? Or, I mean, we got that presentation, so I think we're all good with that. We're happy with the results.
And what is our fund balance at now? I'd just like to hear it.
I look at Laurie today.
17, it's in the presentation you're gonna see at 6 o'clock.
Oh, okay, we'll just wait till 6.
It's like 17 or something.
Yeah, we met our goal. We met our goal, and so that's fantastic. So actually, in this next year, I think, you know, we've met our goal. And so now I think it's important to maintain. But also, I think we should set another goal. We should set different goals. And so I do wanna talk about that, maybe, I don't know, January, February, but I do wanna talk about that and say, okay, we're at where we're at. Now, what do we wanna see? Sustainability, you know, whatever, so that. So we can, 'cause I always think it's good for us to have goals because then, then we make sure we're working towards something rather than just going backwards. So, okay. All those in favor to approve the 2017-18 audit, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Move to 8.7.
Eight. We are going to 8.7. Okay.
So hopefully the board members have an opportunity to...
And we got it, and it says 8.8 on your...
Oh, in your packet, yes.
But that's fine, but if everyone can... Go ahead, Dr. Crandall.
So this was drafted, get some feedback from board member Shirley, which made a lot of sense. One of them was to put in the information of how long you, or, excuse me, what the expectations are that there's, you know, the monthly meeting. We'd also need to let them know about the possibility of workshops as well. The other question, and I had actually had the same question. I did shoot an email, just seeing if I got any response back from the administration. But if you look on selection category, it's a 3.25 GPA. It's on page two there, criteria for selecting. Be kind of interesting, and I had not looked. This was created in different districts, so we took it and tweaked it maybe Cook County. So that may be an item to look at. Do we, 3.25, how many kids is that?
Right.
And I don't know for us. Is that really limited, all of a sudden, from 90 kids down to 30? So do we open it up? And, you know, the suggestion I think you had was a 3.0. Looking at the 3.0 GPA or higher instead of the 3.25. But we can take a look at that data. Otherwise, if we go back to the beginning here, so the purpose is pretty straightforward. Having a student rep on the board. Provide student voice, positive productive learning experience for the kids. Board members with the youth voice, so they're aware of what's going on in their schools. And then, two-way communication between students and the board. Last week, my superintendent's meeting, this was a topic. Actually, that's where I got this document that I shared with the administration. And each of the superintendents that have students on the board is very positive. They thought, they spoke very highly of it. They suggested, and one or two, including myself, said, yes, we're looking at moving in that direction. Everybody who didn't is actually moving in that direction as well. Eligibility in term, the way this particular school did it, they did it for, they're there for a year. And they begin January 1st and end December 31st. So this would be, you know, like Mr. Dale's last meeting, this would be their last meeting and then someone else would take on. So it's a junior who starts and then they finish out the first half of their senior year. That was this, this particular model. I'm not sure what the board thinks about that as far as that goes. But that is the model that they had presented. So the eligible student, obviously, full-time student, member of junior class at Cook County. Term is the one year to December, or, excuse me, January 1st. So they would start at our organizational meeting and then, and at this meeting and the following year.
Question, Dr. Crandall?
Yeah.
Full-time registered member of the junior class, does that mean they're onsite? Or they're at home, taking classes online?
So that's a question to the board. You know, how do we wanna define what is full-time? Full-time registered means you're taking your full classes. If I'm taking a class, like you're mentioning, PSEO or Minnesota Online, it's still a class, is that, do we wanna consider it full-time? We had a student here earlier this year who's still a full-time student, the Henderson boy, but...
He's not here.
He's not here. You know, so that may be something that we wanna put, that they have to be attending Cook County.
I think attending Cook County school makes, because I, I, I mean, I consider a student that's here but taking PSEO online, but still comes to school here, a full-time student. I don't know if this definition means that. And so I definitely think we would want something, 'cause it would make sense. It would be very difficult for somebody who's not going to school here to be able to do this. But if you're going to school here, but some of your classes are online classes, I don't think that should disqualify you from being that rep. So I don't know if that wording and...
So some way, shape, or you have to note there.
I think there's other things in the document that would kinda weed that person out just in terms of their, like, expectations for attendance here. And also being like, having a level, effective level of a communication with the school and like classmates, et cetera. You know, that person, you know, maybe they're not preempted from applying, but they wouldn't be the strongest candidate because of those reasons. They wouldn't be able to fulfill, I don't know. We could certainly clarify that, but I don't necessarily know those.
Well, I just wanna, yeah, 'cause I wasn't sure exactly what the definition of that full-time student meant. 'Cause my first thought was, so does this disqualify the PSEO kids who are taking online classes? And maybe that wasn't the intent, I don't know.
Sure.
Are we on to the next one? 'Cause I have questions on the selection and training.
Yeah, I think so. Well, the last one in that section was select student. We'll have shown the majority of the items listed under the criteria.
Sure.
Which is the next. So Cook County High School, student government will ask for applications. Applications will have numbers, names not visible. Student council will select a minimum of two and a maximum of five candidates. Candidates will be selected by mid-December for oral interviews. Oral interviews will follow. Those to conduct the interview will be the district's administrating team consisting of the, our administrative team, two principals, and myself. Any...
Yeah.
Don't we have a say?
Well, I was gonna say, why don't we have a board member on that? I was gonna look at the board to see what they thought.
Yeah, remember, this is, we took this from somewhere else. So that's why it's being presented to the board, so we can change things.
I think I would like to have a board member. I'd like to have a board member.
Or two even.
I also think, 'cause I looked at the application and, um, because of our small school. And, um, I don't think that it's necessarily a good idea for our, the, the kids who, and I'm assuming this reference means to the kids who are in the, on the government, student government right now, the student council. So student council kids. So here's the deal. If you're gonna write, you're gonna take somebody's name off, but you're gonna list every activity that they're in, I can figure it out. So, I don't think that's necessarily a fair way in our small district. I don't think that's... I have a little bit of concern about that. Everyone getting a fair shot, to be honest with you. Because our, our student council this year kinda morphed and kinda was developed, you know, 'cause we had junior class advisor, now we've kinda got this. And so, I'm not gonna say, and I'd get my information, 'cause I've got a student here. And so I'm not gonna say that was a really positive, super, um, agreed upon by all the students, how that was all developed. So I guess I, I'm a little, I'm not 100% for having them pick it. I'm not, I'm not for the kids, because we're so small. And I just would fear that somebody, that local kid politics are gonna get in the way of saying, oh, pick my friend. My friend really wants to do it.
You're saying not to have the student council involved at all?
Um...
I mean, or at least not to see the applications.
I think it's hard, I think it's gonna be hard for them to see the applications.
They could set it all up.
Yeah.
And the applications would go to
Yeah.
superintendent or principal or whoever to start with. And then we get the applications.
Well, maybe nobody wants to do it, so it won't...
You have to plan that.
Right, but then on the other hand, I think that there might be students that are not necessarily academically motivated or, you know, but they'd love to be part of this. I mean, they're very social, they talk to their friends, they wouldn't mind talking to us, they wouldn't mind talking to the camera, sharing. I wouldn't want them eliminated, you know. I, I don't know. I mean, it'll be interesting. Because those kids often that are so involved in everything else, at some point, and, you know, what, something's gotta give. And I would guess that being on this board would be, take precedence of, would not take precedence over basketball practice or...
Maybe we put the, I just kinda, and the wording can get changed, but maybe the first line, the Cook County High School student government will promote applications.
Yeah.
And then not have number two or three. And then it goes to, the candidates will be selected by mid-December for oral interviews. And it may be that, you know, I look at student A and, well, they didn't meet the criteria. And then we'd let them know. Student B did, so now we're gonna have six, six in there. You go from there.
Yeah.
But that's my opinion, so I don't know what you guys think.
Sure, I mean, I'm, you, I'm, you can appreciate those things if you, you know, have the info to appreciate that sort of perspective, which makes sense.
Yeah.
I guess my only concern with that would be, this is sort of like a, you don't wanna take on a bunch of work, you know, by sifting through, you know, 100 applicants. It's, I, that's the way I read this. This is sort of the point of that, is to kinda like do the first round, you know, as is sort of...
Do you really think youth students are gonna try to sit around once a month?
I think that's why it was designed that way. But I don't think that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So it probably is not necessary.
Yeah.
So as long as you feel comfortable taking on, you know, the extra task.
Forty to 50 in the class.
Yeah.
Even half of them still.
And selling once a year? You would have to look at all of it.
Right.
Back to the term, I do like it where they start January 1st.
You like that criteria?
I like that.
I do too. It matches up with what board members do.
How we come and go.
I do think it's a good idea to do it that way.
And it'd be great if they could, you know...
They could maybe mentor the incoming one.
June, July, and August would be the, June, they should probably make it, but the July and August would be something we'd have to discuss. See if they can make that. If they can, they can. If they can't, they can't. I think those would be easily, excuse them from those.
Yeah.
But then if they could be on board, I mean, they'll be here and maybe if they could, for the new person coming in, if they could, you know, help them, give them a little advice.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to sit with them during a meeting, would they?
They could be part of the training.
But that's a good idea, doing it that way.
We haven't gotten down to that part yet.
You would, that would give an opportunity to do it.
And they could promote.
Yeah.
They could promote for the next year, like, it was a heck of a good time, so.
Any other thing in the selection and training process before we go to the next one?
The next one is criteria for selecting. Students be in high standard both academically, and they have the 3.25. Suggested 3.0, and in terms of attendance, no unexcused absences. suggested three point oh, and in terms of attendance, no unexcused absences.
I think three point two five might be a little high.
So Dan said, suggested three point oh.
Three point oh.
I would agree with that too.
Yeah, three point oh, cause I agree, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how many students that, that is.
Well, and that, and also sort of the, part of the root of the question I had was, how does that align with, like, other programs that have an academic requirement? You know, we don't want it to, you know, we'd want it to be kind of like similar or the same, if something else requires high standing, you know, what does that mean?
What is it for sports?
There isn't a first, there, you have to be passing your classes to be in sports, if you're failing, you can't be in sports.
Oh, there, there's a GPA report.
We have a GPA, and we have a G, we have a honor roll and a high honor roll. I can't remember, I, I can't remember what those numbers are.
I don't work with that, I don't.
I know, I-
You don't work with that, I have to.
I can't remember what those are, and so I'm, I don't know, maybe that's where the three point two five came from, I'm not sure.
Um, student shows eagerness to serve school, community and fellow students. Student shows an interest in the welfare of their school and its students. Student shows a willingness to devote time to the position. Shows an aptitude for leadership, demonstrates the ability to communicate ideas, both theirs and those of the school they represent. Agrees to com- uh, be committed to keeping their school body well-informed on issues that affect the schools. And must be enrolled as a full-time student. Define that. Now, we've been defined earlier. I'm gonna check on, uh, the very first one says, no unexcused absences. I'm gonna do a check and see how many kids that would be right now. If we did that. If we had that as part of the criteria.
And that, so does that go for this year? For the current year that they're in? Or does it go back?
Right. Right.
So it should say, it should be if we're gonna use, it should just be the current year.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Current year, yeah.
If you're gonna use that.
Yep.
Uh, moving on to responsibilities. Attendance at an orientation training session with superintendent and other school board members prior to taking office.
There, that's where you could enter the, the, the student.
Ment.
The person leaving.
The person leaving, the open person, the past term, yeah.
The past student representative. Uh, preparation for school board meetings, but become familiar with agenda items, agenda backup materials received prior to board meetings. Attendance at school board meetings in order to provide youth voice about issues at hand. Students may be excused early if approved by the superintendent or school board chair. Student representatives cannot attend the meeting and it's their responsibility to notify the superintendent's office. Communication about board meetings, uh, with student body, either written or oral form, discussing pertinent information. So they'd also do that conduit if so, something was going on, they could share. Share out to a report, to an announcement, some way, shape or form.
So it would, I don't know if we wanna put that in right there, but it, I think it would be nice that, then that this, this, the student would be, six point oh, the student highlight is their thing.
Okay, yeah.
But I, we should probably look and ask everybody what they think. I mean, what do you think? It could be?
I think that, that makes sense.
I don't know, do you think that makes?
Well, it could, and they could, I, it, it, they could do lots of different things with it.
I think it might be nice. Yes.
They could ask a teacher to bring their highlight, I mean, they, that's, that
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
student body person would have to.
They do a report.
Correct.
Right.
And we could still have the fire come in.
Correct.
Or, you know, the, whatever volleyball team did great, and so we can have their captains come in or their team come in.
I think it's really easy, it's easy for us to do sports, I think that comes easy and we do that quite often. I think it's the other things that sometimes, I mean, and we, um, we've definitely brought in knowledgeable and we've done other things, but sometimes.
Yeah, the little guy who did the local, uh, grind.
Yep, the crossing guard, and so I just, um, wanna make sure that we get, try to get all, all sides of our school.
Hey, cause the elementary side, our student rep probably doesn't have to know what's going on down in the second grade classroom, or something great may have happened.
Yeah.
And I think there are things that probably go on here that we never hear about, like, there might be some high school mentors that travel down to Sawtooth and how, just let us know.
Yeah.
I mean, they're all things to celebrate.
So it wou- and it wouldn't necessarily maybe have to be every meeting, but maybe that could be, you know, you have an administrative student highlight, and then you have a student highlight, one from admin and one from our rep, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, with some coaching, you could, this, the student could certainly be well-rounded in what they talk about. And maybe it could be even richer update than we get, maybe sometimes, just because maybe they have a little bit more time to de- dedicate to it, cause it's like, how many agenda items does the administration have to produce something for, or be attentive to? Like, all of them?
Yeah.
You know, as a student, you know, they may, not to say they don't have a lot on their plates too, but, you know, it might be something that could they get to a little more.
Well, again, they could also, since they're in the halls and in the building, they could say, oh yeah, and then today this, or something good, something bad, whatever. And is there a mechanism, this is a thing with communications? Um, how do, how is the information from El- from Sawtooth, how does it get filtered to our principals? I mean.
They're, they're in the rooms.
Right, but, but is there a way there where, if, if there were a student rep, if this evolved this completely, that the student rep could do a little, um, report of what elementary is doing?
And that might be something that the student rep does, sends out a, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
They send a note out to the elementary staff and just says, hey, I'm writing up my board report, are there any students have it?
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Cause most likely this child is gonna be a busy person.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the rights, uh, student school board rep representatives will be seated at the board table. Uh, they may make a request to place items on the agenda through the same process as regular school board members. Uh, free to speak on all agenda items. Will provide, uh, with meeting agendas and related materials prior. Suggested that they be an ex-officio member of their school's student government group. So that would mean, say, whatever, you know, John Doe gets selected, hasn't been a member of student council, now it becomes a stu- member of student council, cause they can report to student council.
How many members are on student council?
I do not know.
Usually it's four.
You, you may know? That's the exact group.
Well, student-
I don't, we not know anything about student council.
Because it's brand new this year. Because we have, because there's been a junior class, and the junior class has the vice president, president, secretary, treasurer. This year, they started the, uh, the student council, and so it, it's new. It is new. Um, I don't know how many kids are on it, to be honest with you. I know little, I know it's made up of, uh, different grades in high school.
Yeah.
We have no principals, yeah.
But, and, yeah.
Back in the day, it was nine, nine through seniors, and each class had four.
Okay.
There was a president, vice president, and secretary and treasurer for each class, and there was a student.
Yes.
President of that, it, that was the way it was, like, it's back in the day, that's been a long time.
Yeah.
I don't know when that ended, and now it started again, so.
Okay, I, I have another question, hang up off of. Who, who decided to make this change? And why?
What's that?
Um, I actually have that same question.
Do we have student council? Now that we have a student council as opposed to-
Junior class advisors.
Well, that is something really if the board doesn't have to deal with.
Yeah.
No, but I'm just curious as to how this came about.
Do I have an answer? I don't have an answer, I'm just letting you know.
No.
That's really something that would be run through the, the building. And for that matter, the kids.
Huh, okay. I'm just curious.
We don't have one of the two administrators who, actually, Mr. Dorr probably knows, cause he was in the two years of the change.
I'm just curious as to how it was facilitated and how students got input and how. I'm just curious, so.
I'll point that out.
We'll be here until they show up next time, and we can grill them.
And let's see, moving on, the rights, limitations, school board representatives do not vote on school board issues. Obviously, as, like myself, they speak on them. Uh, student board representatives will not be given materials pertaining to private personnel matters, contract negotiations, legal action strategy and private data information. Uh, student school board representatives are not allowed to attend any closed sessions or meetings, and, well, just, that's pretty straightforward. And then scholarships, uh, opportunities, student school board representatives are able to note, uh, this experience on scholarship applications as service hours and leadership skills. Uh, there's also a scholarship available that they can apply for.
I mean, they could, I mean, they am listing this as service hours and leadership skills, it's not limited to just on scholarship applications though.
Correct. It would be on their college applications.
Yeah, it's whatever they're applying to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And then the next is, uh, I'm gonna move to the, the actual application piece. You know, it's pretty straightforward, I'm not sure if we need grade, if we, you know, it's only gonna be juniors.
Probably not.
Phone numbers, which number would you prefer, email, mail? Um, activities that you were planning to be involved in during your high school years. And then the following questions, why do you wanna be a student school board representative, and why do you think student voice on school board's important? And number two, what qualities and skills do you have that could contribute to your effectiveness as a school, a student school board representative? And then the last piece is, I have read and understand the eight sections contained in the attached document, student school board representative selection procedures, which we would have set up.
I would just suggest making the first question, two questions and have three questions total. Just kind of makes it. Why do you do this, and why do you? And then, do we need a parent's signature?
Yeah.
It makes sense.
Yeah, there's some minors.
Yeah, I, I would wonder that, asking them, I, I don't know, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, you should probably check.
Yeah, one of the questions too, I have just, that just dawned on me, is that, that we meet up in Grant Forks too, how do they get up there? You know, they can drive up with us, or they can drive on their own.
Right.
Right.
School fans, that's like a really good idea for that.
Yeah.
I would think so, and it would have to be a s- written, something written for that specific meeting, if, with a parent's signature and something like that. You know, I don't know if the student council that's chosen right now during the school year was, if a parent, if a parent had to.
I think there's promotions or, I think there's a parent.
I would think so.
On most things like this, I'm pretty sure we have to, as a parent, we do have a sign up on it, yeah. Good catch.
Yeah, cause you're gonna be sitting around with other adults.
Yes.
Not teachers.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, and to be honest, um, you know, some of our meetings, you know, we've had some heated, heated meetings before, and so, I just wanna make sure that, uh, both the parent and the student, um, are aware that, and, you know, things usually remain respectful, but, um, just wanna make sure that it's not a negative experience for somebody coming, having to sit up here and have, you know, maybe some, I mean, um, loud words coming at you, I don't think necessarily that I'd wanna subject a student to that.
Somebody from the public or-
Um, but, and hope that, hopefully that, I mean, it's far and few between, but it, it happens, so. Just wanna make sure that everyone is clear on.
And, and some of the models, the way this model's, uh, described, is they're sitting here for the meeting.
Yeah.
Entire meeting, uh, some of the other models that were shared with me is that they, they come, they sit at the table, and part of the meeting at the beginning is, like we do our student highlight, they share what the comings and goings as far as what's going on in the school, and then they, and that's pretty much the two models that were described, that, that superintendent's described, or how it operates as far as having a student board.
So on these questions here, the, um, the first question, that's not numbered, list the activities. I guess the point of the question like that is just to get a sense for, like, their interests. Um, so I would maybe, this is a minor point, but I would maybe, like, reword that a little bit. Rather than just ask, you know, list the activities you're doing here at school, and, you know, you might, can you talk about your interests, what are, what, you know, what, what are your interests, what are you involved in? It might elicit a little bit more of a response, rather than just like, you know, a couple, a couple of things listed, you know, or nothing. You know, because maybe somebody isn't in sports or whatever, but, you know, they have interests in politics or something like that, and, you know, just gives them an opportunity to kind of introduce themselves a little bit, I guess, I mean, it, we could get into that a little bit here, but, I don't know, just, just a thought. Squeezing more rather than less is always something I'm driving for when getting applications to my business from college kids, like, please, one-word answers are not ideal.
Well, then maybe you have a student who's not been involved in all sorts of school functions, but they work at the nursing home, or they volunteer at the nursing home, or they can take apart an engine and rebuild it. You know, I mean, they, or different, or, or they do motocross racing in the summer, I mean, that's, yeah.
Okay, so, um, you've got a lot of changes there, so you're gonna bring those back to us?
Oh, actually, what I'd like to do is I'll see if I can, I'll send it out to you.
Yes, okay.
So we can move forward.
Because I don't know.
So hopefully, so hopefully we can get something approved at the January meeting, so we can get that started, so February meeting, that there, that we have them in place.
Okay.
You, you think in having a, a student in place in February?
Yeah, so, cause we do have it on here, but I think we would like to see the changes before we do a motion to, cause there was kind of a lot on there, so I, um, so we didn't make a motion or anything to do it, so, um, well, that would be great, Dr. Crandall will send it to us, then we can, um, hopefully approve that in January and then get that process going.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? All right. So eight point eight, excuse me, um, this is the resolution canvassing returns of general election. And so I'm gonna introduce the following resolution and, uh, move its adoption. Resolution, resolution canvassing returns of votes, Cook County School District number one six six, general election. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number one six six as follows. It is hereby found, determined and declared that the general election of district held on November sixth, twenty eighteen was in all respects duly and legally called and held. As specified in the attached school board voting results form, the following candidates have been elected to fill three vacant seats caused by expiration of term on the school board of Cook County School District number one six six. Uh, District one, Deborah K. White, four hundred and forty-two votes. District three, Rena Rogers, five hundred and fifty-eight votes. District five, Dan Shirley, five hundred and thirty votes. Be resolved, the above-named candidates have received the highest number of votes and are elected to four-year terms to commence the first Monday in January twenty eighteen. Be it further resolved, the school district clerk is hereby authorized to certify the results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Okay, so I introduce that, so I need somebody to second that.
Who'll second?
All right, and we will do a roll call, a vote for, uh, following in favor of this, so Lundie, aye?
Gettle, aye.
White, aye.
Shirley, aye.
And Jansen, aye.
And Jansen is absent. Um, so we have four, four, and one absent. And we're getting signatures.
Yeah, this is the.
I'm not on there yet.
Well.
Well, you could be on there. No, I don't like sticking notes.
No, I, it's cause you got the lowest amount of votes, so you don't wanna sign.
So as we say, celebrate our newcomers that are coming, we also have to celebrate the one that's leaving us. So Mr. Gettle. We would like- So Mr. Gettle, we would like, go ahead and start, Crandall.
All right, so Chris Gettle, serving as a school board rep for the years two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen, in recognition of your years of service on the Cook County School Board and your support and commitment to excellence, excellence in education. All right, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris.
And Mr. Gettle was our treasure for how many of those years?
Three.
Three of those years, very much appreciated your time and efforts, watching over the books for the school district.
Yes.
Four.
Obviously, we heard earlier in the meeting that we've met our financial goals during your tenure, so thank you for doing your due diligence and watching out for the school district. And so, I appreciate your services, the board sounds like they do, and obviously for the community of Cook County. For watching out for our school district, thank you.
So now we all, we get to all say our nice things about Chris. Chris, it's been great the last four years, I know, we, we have eight minutes, so we can milk this. So, um, I just wanna say, I jokingly would say to Chris all the time, he's my voice of reason, because sometimes I'm a little bit intense, and so, uh, Chris, it's been great, it's been, uh, you know, we've got kids that are the same age, and so I just really appreciate what you brought to the board, and I thank you for serving for four years. And I will definitely miss you, and good luck.
Thank you, thank you, good luck to you.
Thanks.
We weren't supposed to make a big deal about this, I've become prepared.
I know.
That's funny, you provided chocolates.
Well, I know, but it's supposed to be caramels, so he'll get his caramels on his own later, so. And good luck, he's, I don't know, you're in some huge house right now, he's climbing around like a plumber, so.
Right.
With air conditioning, thirty feet in the air.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, it's been great having you here. I don't know how I'm gonna get into my computer.
You did it by yourself tonight.
I'll have you on speed dial. Thanks for being here, it was great. And I'll probably never see you around after this.
Probably not.
And truly, because I've never seen before, this is the only place I ever see Chris in the, in the whole county, ever, ever.
He's at grocery store once.
Once, once in four years, a random.
Yeah.
That's it. So it goes.
Yeah, so thanks to Chris for, you know, not, um, almost forcing you into, uh, you know, sort of openly meeting law violation. In the county, he's watching out for us and it's.
That's right.
Yeah, it's been great to work with you for just a year, Chris, but, um, yeah, learned a lot, kinda watching your style, appreciate that.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the, um, community for giving me the privilege to serve on the school board of ISD one sixty-six. I learned a lot, um, over the four, over the four years, and I'm very glad I've, I, um, ran and, um, got voted in, and my wife now is very happy that those four years are over. Just like to say that also, I'd also like to thank the administration, um, instead of fellow board members, um, I think, um, I think we're really on the right track, and I'm sure you're gonna keep it on track and continue on, so.
Those were some really tumultuous four years of being here with us.
Yeah, there was some stuff going on.
Yeah, we had a few things.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. He will now be signing up for TST, post-tenure stress disorder therapy.
Well, thanks, Chris. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you. We've got five minutes before a truth and, we can't start a truth and taxation until six o'clock. So, we still have nine points here administrative reports, would you like to give yours?
I'll do, uh, the principal and assistant principals, they provided, I just wanna point out that they did have,
A written?
Uh, November thirteenth, the first grade special lunch, or excuse me, that was the kindergarten special lunch, and then first grade just did theirs on the eleventh, uh, parents attended, families coming in to have lunch, I believe there's some photos out on that. Actually, I remember seeing them. Uh, midterm already, just happened on December eleven, or seventh, uh, for this second quarter. Great event, uh, this last month, we had gold medalist Billy Mills here. And that was for the whole student body, and that was on November twenty eighth. That was just an outstanding presentation, that we were very fortunate to have him come back. Then there are a few items there about, and one was mentioned, there's a scheme tomorrow, and then basketball, whatever, and a couple of events, our basketball teacher taking place. Uh, for my report, a big piece I'd like to share is that, and it's tomorrow, four to six, we're having our open house. Uh, we'll have some signage out, so direct people to the culinary yard space and our science space, and also, we included the, uh, the tech plaza up there for our vocational, uh, piece as well. And then we're having the auction, we're having that set up. Got everybody lined up to get it all set up, and also for the bidding process to take place. And so that's exciting to have that take place along with the opportunity, people here for the open house may be able to catch a basketball game. Uh, another piece, myself, I attended Governor-elect Wallace's, his presentation in Silver Bay. And a positive message coming from him on education. Nice thing is we elected a former teacher, and actually his wife works in the special education world. So, his partner in life is also in education. Uh, but he did speak highly of that, I talked about early childhood, um, working in, you know, future as well. He kind of worked at the whole spectrum, talked a lot about early childhood, building that strong base. Let's, let's get them set for moving forward, and then in the later years talked about, you know, college and career, I guess, I can get right down to it. Um, and then I know he was in Grantport, and I believe, believe board member White was there, I'm not sure.
Dance, great.
Yep, and I hope you experienced something similar, along those lines, so. Uh, looking forward to some positive things, hopefully in the next legislative session, uh, for our, for our school district. And that's the end of my report.
Great. Okay, so we have two minutes.
So we can set, we'll set up in the next two minutes, so we'll be ready to roll.
Yeah, so let's do, we need to suspend our regular meeting to do the truth and taxation meeting.
Do we have to say that out loud?
Yes, it's, yeah, I, so I need a motion, and I.
Make a motion to suspend the meeting, do the truth and taxation.
Okay.
Six o'clock, we'll come back.
Okay, and at six o'clock we'll start, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, we've got one absent.
Aye, Maria.
Okay.
So Rena, I don't know who, met Deb White?
We have met, I mean, all, all, well, kind of, you know, it was like all, all less.
Can I have you give him the plaque again?
Oh. Hi Rena.
Hi Deb.
I'll, I'll do that.
There you go.
This is for their holiday, it's a donation, and like, hold on, see, I'm here. So it's not running through school funds, it's something.
It's going to Mitch.
Yeah.
Okay, so, why is this a lot?
We're up to eleven now. Yeah, everybody's doing well, they started doing well, it is, into the program, it is in the cabinet, so.
We went through a whole lot in the last four years.
We got two kids that are doing pretty.
Holy cow.
We've got a couple of girls that.
But don't you feel?
From a prior school. And then and that, I don't know how much.
Oh, I do.
But they're gonna go, and this is what we're looking to do.
Think about financially. That was me. Remember?
That's.
Those meetings, those are super fun. I love like A or C.
Oh, I still think about those things.
Remember that?
And you have a little these fan, and then, and then get these other kids into school. This is, this is, this is what, this is what. This is, this is a, right, right here, everything we're doing right now.
The R G B goes away.
Hey, we got, we got measures now that, and, you know, I actually did like that.
Oh, yeah.
But this probably was Shirley, we're all doing, we're getting, and the kids are.
All right, so it is six oh one.
I hope Rena like you to bounce me out.
So it's six oh one, so you can start whenever you want, Lori. Okay?
Oh, wait, I wish we used that.
Nice huge screen.
Just like a family.
I thought she was posing.
I know, well, they're, it's almost like popcorn.
It does look popcorn.
I don't know, the boards went through this last week, so, I have a copy, if anyone else would like to copy Brian's.
But give one to us.
Oh, I guess we did.
I do have a couple of, um, so, and I have one paper that accidentally got in the. So, um, it's after six, so we legally can start truth and taxation, um, presentation for this year?
No.
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 So, um, this discussion is for the school district portion only of the proposed property taxes. Um, each property tax statement has four entities that make up the, um, final proposed tax bill. Uh, county, city, school district, and then special taxing entities are at the bottom of the.
What's that noise?
I don't know, Tom, will you?
Is that outside?
Please grab the door, it sounds like chairs.
Okay, thank you.
Oh.
Or a jet, I think.
Yeah, definitely. Um, so that special taxing entity could be possibly the hospital, or, you know, um, I think there's two or three of them that are reflected in that final number. A lot of times, there's not a line, the, there's a line separating the other three, but there's not a line separating the special taxing entity. So sometimes people think that that's also the school district. Um, we've had people come to the meeting before and ask that question, but it's not, so. Um, each set their own levy and then have their own public meeting. Um, the levy cycle, our board adopts the final levy, um, December twenty eighteen. Property owners then pay taxes on that during May and October, based on that certification of twenty nineteen. And then the funding is recorded mostly in fiscal year twenty twenty for the school district. Um, this chart compares the levy by category. Um, the column in the far right is the total of each one of these categories. And the numbers are probably a little hard to read, but it's, the change is seven point six four percent over last year's total dollar amount. That doesn't necessarily mean each person's taxes are going up by seven point six point, seven point six four percent. But that is the total levy, and then that total levy dollars gets spread over different properties in different ways. And we're gonna look at each one of those categories to see how those numbers and what property classification ends up paying on each one of those columns. So. Um, we put this chart in that has the year-over-year percent change. Last year, the, um, levy was a negative one point one zero percent. And that's mainly, it's not due to any changes that the board made, saying, hey, we're gonna levy more dollars or not levy more dollars. It's mainly based up on changes in student population estimates and actuals, and then also, um, adjustments. So those adjustments, there's several adjustments, there's about eight pages of adjustments that come through. Last year they were negative adjustments, this year they were positive adjustments. We didn't really change anything to say, hey, we wanna levy more dollars this year, based on any student counts or whatever. All the adjustments just flow through to us.
Who makes these adjustments?
The state, and it's highly based on our student populations. So they look at what our estimate last year was for student population, and then what our actuals were. And if we estimated low, and we had more students, then the state owes us money. And then if we estimated high, and we had less students, then that's how the negative adjustments take place.
Uh, for example, there was, uh, we've talked about long-term facility maintenance. Uh, there was inequity rural versus the natural area. And they, through legislative process over a period of three years, they changed the formula, so now that they're the same. And so that would be one where it would change our levy, and any rural school, their levy change, it might not disclose the amount that we allow us to levy for for long-term facility maintenance, and that's now.
So those formulas that are based on.
So formula has changed legislatively. Uh, there have been sometimes, uh, funding for small rural schools. And those formulas have changed at the state, and that was reflected in all that.
Um, this is our proposed levy vote, based by voter approved versus other. So the voter approved portion of our levy is about thirty-six percent versus sixty-four of other. So, um, if you know that three years ago when we had the vote, that's how much of that is accounted for in the dollar, based in the dollar amount of the total. Okay, the first category is referendum, referendum market value voter approved. So, this is what the voters approved, and the summary of the changes and who pays is the big point on here. Homestead, commercial, agricultural, and apartment buildings all pay a piece of this. Um, the previous voter approved levy expired and pay fifteen levy. And then this is based on our pupil units enrolled, which in the last two, three years actually increased. Um, districts operating referendum passed by voters in November of twenty sixteen results in a voter approved levy portion. And this year is at four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty, and it's just up slightly from last year. And that uptick is caused by the number of students we had in those adjustments. So there, these are the funds that we will be using during our general operating expenses for fiscal year point. So R M V other, same group of people pay for this category, but it wasn't voter approved. And so this too is based on the number of pupils, um, includes prior year adjustments, back and forth, up and down. And then the net increase over the prior year is thirty-nine thousand, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. I didn't realize I got that accurate, twenty-nine cents included. Net tax capacity is, is, um, who pays is all taxpayers including seasonal rec. So that was how we got a lot of, um, things voted through, that's all in this category. Um, multiple levy categories affect this, and it's approximately sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars increase in this category. And a bunch of those adjustments flow in and out, and up and down, and so, most all of them this year were increases. Last year we had an offsetting up decreases to help keep that number very, very similar. So, um, reemployment, so basically unemployment, um, if the district's been levied for unemployment, that actually flows through into our voter, our taxpayers levy. Career tech and prior year adjustments was almost nine thousand dollar increase. Long-term facilities, prior year, a nineteen thousand, over nineteen thousand dollar increase.
And the formula changed, now it's, we shouldn't see such a large increase at next year's.
Right. Going, right. It's kind of leveled off now for the long-term facilities. And then operating capital, um, seven thousand, alternative compensation adjustments, five thousand four hundred and fifty. Safe schools adjustments, seventeen hundred, and then various other miscellaneous categories, and that'll be in about eleven thousand when you take them all together, so. So, another category is community service, even though the chart shows that it's zero, we still get community service dollars for community education. Um, who pays for this is taconite relief funds offset community education for the taxpayers of Cook County. So, even. So even though the district still gets money in this category, it's coming from the taconite relief funds. And that's based off of, some of that's based off of their production funds. And um some of that is highly based on our population. So if our population is increasing, we get little upticks in this area um. This year it's increasing approximately eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and largely due to early childhood family education. Summary of levy changes for debt service. So we have both voter debt service and then then debt service other. And they pretty much offset each other. One went up one point, one went up one point four four percent, the other one went down one point five four percent. Um who pays all properties again, including seasonal recreation. That's that's where our six and a half million dollar bond funds. And then also um we had the refer or um a refunding bond issued in twenty seventeen that's saving the taxpayers ninety-five thousand dollars over the seven years. We were able, it's like refinancing your house, we were able to refinance one of our bond debts to save the taxpayers money. Um this levy is a portion of our revenue budget is twenty-one percent of our revenue. So we, even though people may think this levy's high, there's a lot of other money and funding that the school depends on. And we've look at that as a portion of our budget to say how we're gonna fund all the activities and the teachers and things that the school does. So it's just a, it's you know, about one-fifth of all the revenue we get. Um this is the question that a lot of people ask. And for the payable twenty nineteen proposed levy, the effect, what is it on a residential one hundred thousand dollar homestead value? And the school portion is thirteen point eighty-three increase over last year's levy amount. So I went to Brady with this question because I n- I know this puts it in terms so like as you're sitting there, you're all thinking, how much is my house residential value homestead? How much is the school increase gonna be and how is it gonna affect me? So that's the big question that everyone seems to ask, so.
So that was all the levy.
Right. So as part of our truth and tractation requirements, we need to do a budget. Do we need to talk about our budget? They don't really tell you what about your budget you need to talk about, but we need to talk about our budget. So this is our, this is our budget discussion. Um twenty eighteen and nineteen expense and revenue budget um.
Now ju- just for clarity, this is the budget the board adopted back in June, correct?
June, yep, this is the budget the board adopted in June. I don't change that without their voting on and changing it. So um lots happened since June and we all know that. So that's why um Dr. Crandall and I will be working on revising it to say this is a lot of what actually is taking place. We've hired teachers, teachers have left, we've um that's the biggest piece. Personnel is the biggest chunk of that whole budget. But um fund six is our building construction fund. If you see that's the big red, if you look at the project projected column on the right, that's the big red negative three million. That's 'cause we got the money two and a half, three years ago and now we're spending it, we've been spending it down. So if you look at that and people say, oh my gosh, it's a really deficit budget, it is when you involve fund six. But really what the board affects and what a lot of the things that we have effect on funds one, three, and five is what make up our general operating fund. If you look at those, those some, some of those funds are four hundred and eighty-seven thousand surplus at this time. Um that may change in March when we really look at some of the things that are happening this year. Um fund twenty-five represents other post-employment benefits, it's a trust fund. Um as we've been doing any healthcare agreements or healthcare retirement incentives, we've been drawing those funds down and that is a revocable trust. So as we draw those funds down, um that make that fund may go away, so.
Um the food service, you can see that that's a negative, that's part of projected deficit.
Right.
Uh that's a separate fund. But uh but this was a directive that we need to spend that down because we had too much fund balance in fund six.
So this year we've actually planned and did some equipment replacements. Um we needed a new warmer, we needed a new cooler, some of the things like that. And the state has a state list that you can actually spend those dollars on and that's what we've been focusing on. Okay? Um fund balance, Deb, this is your question that you asked earlier. The audited general fund balance on June thirtieth twenty eighteen, one million seven hundred and ten seven ninety-nine. Some of that is assigned and the board has the ability to assign some of that for other things too. Even though it's a portion of it, you have that, you know, just, just no reserved is a. Is, reserved is different, reserved is what M D E says, I can only spend health and safety funds on health and safety items. Assigned is what you guys have the choice to make and where to put some of those dollars um.
You you can give a directive, we're going to assign three hundred thousand dollars for buses. At the same time you can, we're going to unassign three hundred thousand dollars for buses and use it for here because we have the.
Right, yep. Fund balance is better than expected due to increased revenues being realized after the initial budget was approved. Um those included several areas, increased general ed revenues partly because of those higher students. Increased revenue from the title and federal dollars, which I never really know what those are gonna be. You know, I we look at past history to try to nail them down. Um additional donations, student fees and miscellaneous revenues. And then additional revenue from state and federal sources. So somebody may say, well, what is that, what is that state and federal sources? The question was asked about the Pilt dollars from the county. We never know what those numbers are gonna be. So we take a very conservative approach on budgeting those Pilt dollars.
And Pilt stands for?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Very good, thank you.
And so I get a email from Brady sometime during the year and say, this may be your Pilt dollars. And then we like either say yay or we're like, oh, that's it. Or you know, we take a very conservative approach on budgeting those. And somebody may ask that question, why? It's just because I don't think Brady even knows what he's gonna get from the federal government, so. You know.
No, I agree, I am.
He 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 actually does it right.
I know, yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's why when I come at come back to the board next year and we say our fund balance is at this level and it changed because why didn't you predict that? Those are the reasons why, you know, you just, you never know. Um and we also increased expenditure from the adopted budget. And they're mostly related to spending grants, funds received over budget amounts. I kind of guess when we're working on the budget of what we might see in grant funds, but again, those sometimes come through, sometimes they don't. And so when we get them for um to put towards something for the football team or something for the basketball team. We try to spend those where people are very classified those. And so.
And so if if there's a grant or excuse me, a donation.
Right.
So if it's just a donation, the board accepts, hey, we accept a thousand dollar donation from John Doe. I go to Brady and Joe.
Mm-hmm.
If the board accepts it as we're accepting a thousand dollar donation or the early childhood preschool program. That money goes to the early childhood preschool program because that is how the board accepted it. If we just accept it as an amount of money, it goes into the general fund. But if we designate it as we accept it, then it is using the term for, assigned.
Now let's stop for a second, so I can do the page down. So, thank you for attending and this is the time that if they were sending comments that um we have to allow the public to comment or um ask questions.
So, any questions from the audience? Clarifications? Here's the time.
Yep.
Thank you Lori.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well done.
Thanks. Um and just as an aside, if you've got any, like Brian, obviously if you've got any more questions, you would talk to Lori.
I will. Yes. Yeah, Lori is the best person to.
Yeah, she's the best person to connect with, okay? So now we need to reconvene our regular meeting at six twenty-two and I need a motion to do that.
Move to reconvene regular meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. So now um we need to approve the twenty eighteen payable twenty-nine tax levy. Information that Lori gave us, which is one. What?
I just wanna listen.
Eight point six? Yep, eight point six. One million eight hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred ninety-six and eighty-nine cents. Let's put the dollar amount out. Eight point six.
I'll move to approve the payable nineteen tax levy.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that is everything. Do you have anything else?
We make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I was gonna ask Mr. Gill if he had one more thing to say.
Nope.
He wants to motion to adjourn at six twenty-three. There's a special dinner waiting for him tonight. Right, we need a second. I'll second that. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay, there's a chance to say nay.
Aye.
Um motion carries. Thanks for coming, everyone. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.